Good evening and welcome everyone to the Thursday, February the 18th, 2021, regular monthly meeting. I'll ask now that you please pause briefly for a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now be led in our pledge of allegiance by Ms. Lakeisha Atkinson, our vice chair at this time.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, justiciable, and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chair Atkinson. Could you now lead us in our school board mission statement?
Sure, Chair. Thank you. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 2.5, attendance, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Mrs. Hunt?
Here.
Mr. Parent?
Here.
Mrs. Schumake?
Present.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Tillage?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Reverend Patillo?
Present.
All members are present.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 2.6, consideration of the agenda for February the 18th, 2021, roll call vote, I need an entertaining motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Parent, second by Ms. Williams. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. We'll ask now that our Vice Chair would lead us in a motion to leave us into closed session.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the Board enter into a closed meeting under the provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purpose: Consideration of various personnel matters, including the assignment, performance, and resignation of specific school employees as permitted under subsection A that one.
Thank you. The motion been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion is the second by Ms. Williams. And for discussion, I just want to ask the public to bear with us. It should take us no more than five minutes for this closed session. If there's no further discussion, I ask for a vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. We'll now move into closed meeting.
All right. I move that each Board member certified that to the best of his or her knowledge only matters which are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and which were identified in a motion to go into closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the preceding closed meeting.
Motion been made. Do we have a second?
Second. Schumake, second.
A second, Ms. Schumake. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt? Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 4.1, public comment, non-agenda item speakers. Do we have any on tonight, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Agenda item 4.2, public comment, Board agenda items. Do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
Thank you. Agenda item 4.3, public hearing, proposed FYI 2021-22 operating budget. And do we have any public comment? For that?
The only public comment is the one that I put in Board docs from Mr. Yutrocki.
All right. Did all Board members receive that and preview that? All right. So I consider that is accepted. Agenda item 5.1 through 5.9 is consent agenda items for approval. If nothing needs to be removed from the consent agenda out, entertain a motion at this time for approval of the consent agenda items.
Move for approval, Atkinson?
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson, second by Mr. Tillage. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 6.1, one of my favorite items, student representative report, Mr. Hunt.
Good evening, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, Dr. Bracy and school board members. This January, this meeting, I had the opportunity, along with the alternate student representative, Jaden Johnson, to record a video to commemorate Black History Month with the Peace Society. In addition to that, I was appreciative to attend the human trafficking webinar hosted by the Office of Youth Risk Prevention. It was certainly an informative session, as we heard representatives from the Virginia Office of the Attorney General and engaged in meaningful discussion. Yesterday, also with the Youth Risk Prevention Office, I took part in the Spring Student Summit. This forum of students from across the division gave everyone the chance to discuss social awareness, kindness, and racial injustice. As I indicated early on, equity is a top priority of mine. I mentioned briefly my work with the State Superintendent Dr. James Lane during my remarks at the October 22nd school board meeting. Now, I would like to provide an update regarding our progress. I happen to be the only student a part of the African-American Advisory Council, and my attention is primarily focused on opportunity zones, which in particular includes access to gifted international baccalaureate, advanced placement, and governor schools programs. To form our priorities, some of which include providing guidance on enrollment procedures for governor schools and accelerated programs, prohibiting master schedules from creating segregated classes, and replacing school resource officers with licensed clinical social workers. Also had the chance to review the ongoing work happening concerning the standards of accreditation. Opportunity gaps subcommittee has identified some areas of focus for those standards, including access to academic rigor, discipline disproportionality, excuse me, and the demographics of students to teachers. As a part of these discussions, my group has discussed the idea of creating a 10-year plan, staffable policy, and pragmatic changes that inform the system over the long run. In a broader spectrum, there are members of this council who are working on achievement gaps that works for Virginia's educated workforce, including leadership positions as the Virginia Department of Education and equity and cultural responsiveness professional development for educators. As they was confident that equity is a serious issue for the Virginia Department of Education deliver on. And as you can imagine, some of these recommendations the council brings forth, it happened immediately while others may require approval from the General Assembly. While we continue to press through this school year and remain steadfast in our learning, I want to take some time to encourage the student body with this quote by W.E.B. The Voice. He said, "Now is the accepted time, not tomorrow, not some more convenient season. It is today that our best work can be done and not some future day or future year. It is today that we fit ourselves for the greater usefulness of tomorrow. Today is the seed time, now are the hours of work, and tomorrow comes the harvest and the playtime." As always, students and community members can follow us on Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook at GPS Student Rep to stay connected. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much, sir. I will say you closed your report out very well. If we were in church, I'd have raised the offering for you. No, thank you. I want to thank you, Miles. You've done a great job as our student representative so far, and it has been unprecedented time that you've actually had to perform your duties, and you haven't wavered and you haven't short stepped, and you've been diligent with your duties, and I really appreciate you for that. Thank you so much. Do we have any other comments from Board members in reference to the report?
Chairman Patillo?
Yes, Ms. Hunt.
Now, I just wanted to echo your sentiments to our student rep, Mr. Mouse Hunt. I just want to say that was an excellent report, and my own son is named Miles. He's young, and I just can hope that he can have the same leadership that you just had displayed in your role as a student rep. So just wanted to give you kudos as well.
Thank you, Board Member Thomas, and I'm sure you will.
All right. Thank you so much again for your report, sir. Agenda item 6.2, curriculum and instruction report, Dr. Nguyen.
Good evening, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chairman Atkinson, members of the Board. I also want to give kudos to Mouse Hunt for his wonderful report and poise and with the professionalism that he provides with those reports. Tonight, we have our written curriculum and instruction report, as always, in Board docs, but we have a very special treat, too. Mr. William Hicks is here. He is our coordinator of social studies, and tonight he will provide information about a pilot that we're participating in, which allows us to offer an elective course in African-American history. Mr. Hicks?
Thank you. Reverend Patillo, Ms. Atkinson, Dr. Bracy, and members of the Board, I am pleased to announce that we were able to participate in this trial that the Governor, excuse me, Governor Northam started an African-American history course throughout the state. We are one of 16 school districts that are participating in this particular pilot. I would like to give a special thank you to Dr. Foster and Mr. Miles Bond from IC Norcom. They were the ones to represent Portsmouth in this particular and have done a phenomenal job in leading the students through the five modules and taking them to their capstone project. Tonight, you will hear from Deanna Butts and Jaren Ratliff. They will talk to you about why they signed up for the African-American history course. They would also talk to you about the most important and valuable lesson they learned and the encouragement of others to participate in this course. So, Mr. Slaffler, if you would, please play the video.
Hello, my name is Jaron Ratliff, and I attend IC Norcom High School. And the reason that I took African-American history is because I wanted to learn more about slavery and the important contributions that it had on African-American history.
Hi, my name is Deanna Butts. I attend IC Norcom High School, and the reason why I chose to take the African-American history class was to just expand my knowledge on that section of history, because not too many classes really give you more information behind that part of history.
The most valuable lesson that I learned was about slavery and the aftermath and effects that it had on African-American history.
We got to see the struggle, like the slavery and all the information behind that, and then going to black people being innovators and building America and things like that. That was a valuable lesson I've learned.
After taking this class, it made me well-rounded and more knowledgeable about African-American history and being black in this society.
Yes, I would definitely encourage others to take the course because many other classes don't give you the broad background of African-American history. They just give you little bits and pieces, and if you want to know more about it, this is definitely the class for you to take.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hicks. We will take any questions you might have at this time. If not, that concludes our curriculum instruction report for this month. Any questions?
Dr. Whitaker?
I have a question about how many students have taken the course.
We had 12 students went through the first pilot of this particular course. And because it was only, we were only able to offer it at one, each district was only allowed to offer that one particular school.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Vice Chair Atkinson.
Thank you, Chair. I'm more so interested in the content. Is there a book or is this all like online or virtual?
It is online. There are a couple of textbooks that are available for the course, but they are not necessary. Everything that the students need are online. There are five modules, the first starting with the, from the ancestral era and the Atlantic world, then heading into the continuous quest and freedoms, moving then into the faces of liberty, modern, the black America, and then, excuse me, the advocacy and the challenge of moving forward. So it takes us from the very, very beginning of African-American and colonization into today, and the students get the opportunity to explore each of those particular items.
Got you. And how sensitive would you say the content is? Is it, I mean, is it polished or is it not?
I think it's very balanced. I was one of the individuals that was allowed to help preview the course. We have gone through approximately three-fourths of the particular course, and everything I saw was very balanced in its approach and how it was presented. Very well pleased in how the state has placed this course forward.
And I'd like to add to that, that this is a pilot course, and part of the reason that the state is piloting it is so that they can get information back from the teachers. And there are three areas that the teachers have been asked to focus on, what they're teaching and how they're teaching it and the impact that it's having on students. The feedback that they get, the state gets from that will guide them in rolling this out as a permanent course for students in Virginia.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen.
As well, our teachers, I mean, will get a great deal of training. They will be paired with college professors as they move through this course, so then we can take that knowledge that Mr. Bond has and share it with the other schools, other high schools, as we pilot this course forward, if the state should agree to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Atkinson.
Thank you. I believe Dr. Whitaker had a hand raising, then Ms. Thomas.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Thomas was first.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I couldn't see.
And I'm sorry, I gotta put my thing back on so I can see everyone. Mr. Hicks, kind of going on top of what Vice Chair Atkinson said, do you know if this possible that this, after this pilot, will they build like additional modules to kind of explore the story before the slave trade and the story before that? Is that something, some feedback, or has anyone not provided that same feedback?
The feedback has not been totally gathered yet because we are on the four-by-four. That's why we were able to complete the course, but most of the areas throughout the state are just a little more than halfway through the course. So feedback will be continuously gathered by the state, and then they will make determinations based upon that. So we haven't quite gotten to that point yet.
Okay, thank you. I was just hoping we can, if they do get that feedback, it would be great to consider the story before the slave trade.
Yes, ma'am. There will be more opportunity for feedback for the state.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, before I came back onto the school board, I was involved in reviewing the content for that class. So to Ms. Atkinson's question, I thought the content was pretty balanced and well put together because we, you know, there were history professors that were involved in compiling the course. But also, there is a segment on pre-slavery, so the course does take into consideration pre-Atlantic slave trade. Although it's very, it's relatively brief, but it is introduced in the course. And another question I had was, what's being done to make students aware that this course is available in terms of advertising?
Dr. Nguyen, do you want me to?
Go ahead, Mr. Hicks.
We advertise it throughout our teachers. We push our teachers to challenge students to be involved in this particular and all of the electives that we have every particular year. This particular course itself, being a pilot, we have not been able to do a huge amount of advertising, but as soon as the course is selected by the state and the option is there, we will then start a campaign to push more students to have the opportunity to protect this course.
Ms. Hunt?
Thank you. And to follow up with Dr. Whitaker, when will we know if the course is going to go active? And will students have the opportunity to add it to their fall rotation after schedules have been completed, because I know that we are in the season of schedules at the high school for those students now?
It will be later in the spring. The state has not determined as of yet when they will make the final approval of the course. As soon as they do, we will begin a push to have students to sign up for the course, and those who have not, provide them an opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Tillage.
Yes, so, Mr. Hicks, my question is in regards to the class being offered as an elective. I know right now it's a pilot program. Is it anywhere, any way possible, maybe in the future, we can look into making this program part of the core curriculum where kids are required to take it, let them do world history?
There's actually a recommendation by the state commission that created the course that it be offered as a part of the required coursework that the students take, but that has yet to be approved yet. So we're still waiting to see if that is yet to come.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Atkinson?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Hicks, just to piggyback on the course itself, if I'm at Churchland or Wilson, is a virtual option available or for me to be able to take the course, or is it just going to be offered at Norcom?
As of right now, it's just at Norcom because we were only able to have one school selected, and Mr. Miles Bond was the one that was selected for the pollen. That's where he teaches. So that's why it's at Norcom High School. But if when the course is approved, it will then be offered at all three.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hicks, for the information. Dr. Nguyen, I'm sorry, Ms. Hunt.
It's not for Mr. Hicks, so we, you know, I can let him off the hook at this moment in time if nobody else has a question for him, but the question is about the instruction report. Do you want me to go ahead?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Okay. Dr. Nguyen, I'm looking at the instruction report. You know, it's my favorite, my favorite part of the meeting, really.
Thank you.
Yeah. But I'm looking at, I'm on, I think I'm on page two, where it comes from the Office of Music. And I have not had a lot of positive feedback about our virtual music program. So my question is, of all of these offerings that we have listed here for elementary and secondary, are they offered at all of our schools? Are they pushed at all of our schools? And if a selected school hasn't seen any of these throughout this semester, is it possible that it's coming the second semester? Because really where I'm getting a lot of feedback from parents is within our elective courses, especially at the elementary level. And so to enrich that curriculum, to make things deeper, to, you know, give them experiences, I would really like to make sure that these are all being provided at all of our elementary schools, because I can tell you that there are some students and there are some schools that haven't seen these. So my question is about the accessibility of them all, and should we be, see some, if not all of these offerings or these virtual enrichments throughout the music program?
I can tell you that some of these programs are rotated. I just met with Ms. Jenkins this week, and we are preparing to offer, for instance, the Young Audiences and the Richmond Ballet at different schools this semester. And that may be the reason that those particular schools, but we make a purposeful intent to make sure that we touch the schools that haven't had it before. So there will be two new schools getting these services this year. I know that she and her team are working on some programs, and they are working diligently, but they have been challenged by virtual learning because the majority of our time has been devoted to core instruction. But she and her team are working on a rich program for summer school, and they are also looking at virtual offerings for different camps for students. And so she had a whole list of students who have participated that we could not post with this, but that information does let us know that we are touching students there as much as we can. We're looking to build that music program, and if you know Mrs. Jenkins, she's on top of it.
I was a student of Gwen Taylor at middle school, and then we went into high school. And so I know what she can do. I know what she's capable of. And I just want to make sure that all of our kids get a taste of what, you know, Ms. Jenkins can do and what her programs can do for those kids, so.
Absolutely. And I would encourage you to have those parents reach out to their schools as well and get that information to us directly, because if there are concerns, we are more than happy to address them, and we certainly want to be equitable in our offerings throughout each and every school and making sure that our students are exposed not just to the music of art, but the vocal part and the chorus and all of that.
Right.
And so we are, we're excited about some of the things that are coming.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Board members, were there any more questions for Dr. Nguyen at this time? Thank you so much, Dr. Nguyen. Agenda item 6.3, discussion item vaccine update, Dr. Bracy.
Good evening, and thank you, Chair Patillo. And with the vaccine update, I first want to call on Mrs. Jessica Durin so that she can give us an update on how our school division is doing with the vaccines that we're receiving. And after her, we do have Dr. Lauren James with us tonight from the Health Department, who will be sharing the update with us as well. So first, Mrs. Durin, if you will start off, please.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Good evening, Chair Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, and Board members. I am happy to announce that we have had a very successful vaccination drive in partnership with the Portsmouth Health Department. And I want to first start off by thanking Dr. James and her team, specifically Ms. Dana Smith and Samara Chapman, who have been great partners to work with, as well as the staff at the Portsmouth Sportsplex, including Mr. Walter Boone, and our own Portsmouth Public School staff, which includes our supervisor, Mr. Malik Wilson, who has been a faithful and committed partner with me in manning the vaccination drive, as well as our custodians who have done a phenomenal job at disinfecting the space and making sure that our employees feel comfortable while they are receiving their vaccines. And they include Mr. Willie Gray, Rosalyn Stevens, Josephine Hughes, Sylvia Hicks, Jacoby Smith, Devonte White, Jeanette Jordan, and Megan Curry. So thank you to Dr. Simmons and his team for allowing those folks to come over and support us in those efforts. We have thus far given vaccinations on three separate dates in February. The first week was on Wednesday, February the 3rd, where 382 vaccinations were given. The maximum that can be given on a day is 400. So the first week, we gave 382. On February 10th, that Wednesday, we gave 378. And just yesterday, we gave 374 vaccinations. We, and so that's a total of 1,134, which is 54.7% of our employees. And so we have sent out a registration so that employees have one last opportunity to register for vaccines and they will be given next week on Wednesday, February the 24th. And that will be the last day for PPS employees to receive the vaccine exclusively through the Portsmouth Health Department. There are 250 available slots for next Wednesday for Portsmouth Public Schools employees. After next Wednesday, our employees will, who are interested in receiving the vaccine, will need to do so on their own by either contacting the Health Department directly or scheduling a vaccine through a local participating pharmacy. And the last thing that I wanted to make sure that I said for those who are listening to the meeting is that those employees who have received the vaccine already and who will be looking for dose two will receive an email to go in and register to receive dose two for either March 3rd, 10th, 17th, or 24th, which will be 28 days after they have received dose number one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Durin, for that report. Any questions for Mrs. Durin before Dr. James presents?
I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Durin again, her staff. I participated in the vaccinations process and it was quick. It was simple. It was easy. And I just want to appreciate them for making it pleasant for all division employees and staff.
Okay, all right. Well, if there, if there aren't any more questions, then, Dr. James, welcome back to PPS's monthly school board meeting.
All right. Hello, everyone. And thank you all so much. Dr. Bracy and Mr. Wynn really helped move this process along. The school system has been one of our largest groups to vaccinate and they have been so supportive every step of the way. And we really appreciate that because this has now been a painless process. Amid their scheduling, we switched to a new scheduling system per our state mandate. So they have really just bared with us through many changes and updates and we are very appreciative of that. So once again, I'm Dr. James and I'll be giving an update on our pandemic metrics and school guidance. Next slide, please. So first, let's just review what COVID looks like enforcement today. We are currently at 18.7% positivity, which is above the state percentage, which is about 9%. We do have 42 new cases a day on average and this number actually has been trending downward. Earlier in the month, we were closer to 70 new cases a day. New hospitalizations over a week are about five and average deaths is three per week. Majority of the cases still are in the age groups of 40 and younger. And we are currently at substantial activity. As we know, our governor did recently share some recommendations that schools across Virginia offer, well, not recommendations, a request that schools across Virginia work on offering an in-person option. And we are happy today to kind of share with the school the metrics and the data on where we are with COVID as a city. Next slide, please. So for our community impact, usually I do my slides with the breakdown of demographics and age, but nothing has really changed since last month. So I'm just going to review the details, the overview or summary. African Americans and elderly have borne greater adverse impact by COVID-19 significantly out of proportion to their representation in the population. The surge information is still similar. It's highest cases are still seeing in those who are less than 40 years old. The recent surge is associated with the colder weather. Human behavior matters. We must support each other to reduce the impact of COVID-19 in our community. We have seen decrease in social distancing and masking among the population. So that's what that comment is alluding to. And lastly, our choices have direct effects on the ability of our children to safely attend school. Next slide, please. All right. So just a quick slide on how we are doing and where we're at with our city vaccination plan. So we have, as a state, shifted to allocations based on population. And Portsmouth is about 1% of Virginia. So whatever the state receives, we receive 1% of that a week. Our first priority group was Group 1A, healthcare providers and long-term care facility residents and staff. Since then, we have moved to the next group, which is 1B frontline staff. This includes police corrections, daycares and schools, food and agriculture, manufacturing, grocery store staff, public transit workers, mail carrier, city officials, and those ages 16 to 64 with severe chronic illness, as well as 65 and up. And as mentioned, we have started our school staff and we hope to have those who participated fully vaccinated by the end of March. So we're really excited about that. And next slide, please. So this is just the continued overview. Once again, if you go to our website, all this information is available and we will be specifically going over the CDC's school metrics. Next slide, please. And what is important about the CDC guidance? Risk of transmission in school is derived from a combination of disease transmission, core indicators and self-assessment indicators, five key mitigation strategies. So what is important to know that our schools are doing? And Portsmouth Public Schools has already presented their plan and we are assured that we have these five things in place. They are masking, social distancing, have clean and disinfection protocol in place, hand and hygiene and respiratory etiquette. And lastly, contact tracing in partnership with the local health department. So CDC's framework is intended to assist states and localities in decision-making. It is not dictating the decision. All right. So next slide, please. And this just reflects, green is school guidance, consider in-person instruction. Yellow to orange is phase two, consider prioritizing in-person instruction. And then red is the phase one where we consider remote learning. But once again, this is not to dictate, this is just to give information or guidance. So, next slide, please. Where are we at enforcement? So if you look at the very bottom for total number of new cases per 100,000, we do have 712 cases per 14 days. So this is in a higher risk. And next, if you look at that, that's our percent positivity, which is the 18.6%. So both of these are in the red category, which does reflect phase one guidance. And that recommendation does also correlate with recommending virtual learning as an option. But if you look at the next indicators, next slide, please. These are more positives. So percent change per cases in the 100,000, that's in the green. And percentage of hospital inpatient beds, that's in the green at 75%. And percentage of hospital inpatient beds that are occupied by COVID patients is 11.2%. And what these reflect are if we did have a surge and we did need hospital capacity, our hospitals aren't a good place where they could accommodate. Next slide, please. So as we continue this discussion, American Academy of Pediatrics recently had an article about the incidence and secondary transmission of SARS-CoVid infection in schools. And it actually was a report. So the report studied a population during the first nine weeks of in-person trans, in-person instruction. The school was on a hybrid model and it was in North Carolina. The surveys were collected and cases were tracked. There were about, let's see, 11 school districts were included. And so the overall findings were that the studies demonstrated that enforcing COVID mitigation policies, the five things we discussed in the previous slide, such as masking, social distancing, hand hygiene, resulted in minimal clusters of infection and low rates of secondary transmission in the schools. And it did not cause a large community infection burden. Data indicates that schools can reopen safely if they develop and adhere to specific COVID prevention policies. So this is just to show that if the schools choose to move forward, it has been shown that it can go safely and that children do not lead the transmission. So despite community transmission, there are schools and cities, even in our region, that have gone back and been able to do it safely. And the article also did show that there were no documented cases of child-to-adult transmission within the schools. And even among the small private schools that are open in our district, most of the cases are correlated to outside activity as opposed to inside the schools, if that's of help at all. So what lessons have we learned from our schools that are currently open enforcement and not public schools? We learned that transmission occurs mostly when someone is unmasked. Teachers need to wear masks at all times. Space shields are not sufficient. Water bottle refill stations rather than water fountains, soap and water in all bathrooms. Limit or stop activity where students have to be closer than six feet at all time during PE class. If students are inside, they need to wear masks even when exercising and band practice. If students cannot wear masks, they should consider virtual practice or outside practices. And this presentation is just to present the CDC guidance and also share some updated studies and give you all the information that you need to move forward. I know at previous meetings, we did talk about the 10% or less positivity moving forward when our city was below that. But, you know, amid the governor's request, I think it's worth taking a look at the information again and seeing what the school board is comfortable with. And next slide, please. With that, I will take any questions that the school board has.
Thank you so much, Dr. James, again for joining us and for the presentation. Do we have any questions from board members for Dr. James at this time? I see Ms. Thomas and Mr. Tillage and then Dr. Whitaker.
Thank you, Dr. James. Thank you, Chair Patillo. And Dr. James, first, also thank you for just the role that you all have played in getting the school and the staff vaccinated. It was like Chair Patillo said, it was a very easy process and appreciate all the hard work that's gone into that. Question about one of the slides you showed. So we are in red, I think you said it was very, I'm looking at it, high transmission red. Is that our current category?
Yes.
But then you said, what was the green category you mentioned?
So those are the secondary indicators and those reflect hospital burden. So when there's a surge, the biggest thing you want to know is if someone was really sick, does the hospital have capacity to care for them? So I was saying that those are positives, that we aren't, that our hospitals aren't fully, I don't want to say stopped, that our hospitals are not at full capacity. You know, that's good. Yeah.
Okay. And for the red, for the high transmission, I'm just looking at this chart from the CDC. So the recommendation is that we can go in hybrid mode with physical distancing. And I just wanted to get clarity from you. That's six feet distance. Is that a requirement in red or is that a recommendation? Because that's been some of the questions about if, I don't know if we have that issue or not, but I just wanted to get your input there. Is that a requirement while you are in red or a recommendation?
So yeah, the CDC recommendation, regardless of what category, is the six feet. Some schools are not able to meet that, but to meet the CDC's recommendation is the six feet requirement. So, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillage.
Yes, thank you, Dr. James, for the presentation, as well as Ms. Durin on your collaboration on vaccines. It went over very smoothly and I do appreciate it. So my question is in regards to kind of what board member Thomas mentioned about the, I think, so you're currently at like 700 and some cases right now in Portsmouth. And then on the next slide, it showed the green minus 22%. Do, are we seeing that there, even though it's high cases still, are we seeing a trending decrease over the last couple of weeks? And if so, is it due to the vaccine rollout?
That's a very good question. So we are seeing our cases are trending downward slowly but surely. And we like to associate that with potentially people following social distancing again and the vaccinations. But we are really just getting started on our second doses. But as we know, our region is so close. I'm sure Portsmouth residents may work somewhere else and be getting vaccinated as well. But we would like to think that the trends will continue to go downward. Trying to be optimistic. But that's a good point.
Dr. Whitaker?
Actually, I think Vice Chair Atkinson was.
Okay, I can't see her. Vice Chair, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Thank you, Dr. James, for the updated information. I just would like to go back to the study. You said it was adult-to-child transmission or child-to-child transmission?
And I said there were no cases documented of adult-to-child transmission. So, you know, child-to-teacher. Or, or staff person.
Gotcha. And, and so with that, it's probably not being with the, the other schools that are open and no numbers regarding like child-to-child transmission as well?
In the study?
Yes, that study.
In the study, there were, there were child-to-child transmissions, but they were low. And when we look at it, you know, there will be cases, correct? But what do we look at? Are our vulnerable people impacted? And will this lead community transmission? So I realize we're still at 18%, but, you know, as numbers trend down, I do not think, based on my readings, that the children cases will like lead the, lead the community, you know, because that's probably a concern. Will this increase our percent positivity for the whole community? But it hasn't been seen even in the other districts that are, have gone back that it leads, especially if we're following the mitigation strategies.
Gotcha. So basically, the preventative to the child-to-child transmission would be the mask and social distancing. But as, but as far as you know, or from your experience, that, that's, that hasn't really been the concern. It was more of the adult-to-child transmission?
Yeah, or we're all human rights, the outside activity, eating lunch together, the normal things we used to do before COVID. So I'm not, you know, being hard on anybody, but you know, those relaxing of our practices of social distancing among adults. Yeah.
So can you clear up a rumor? Are you more susceptible to the virus being inside versus being around, I guess, human activity? And so, so basically are you vulnerable being on the inside? Has anyone asked you that?
So it is more likely that if you're in a closed space, just because of this virus is spread through respiratory droplets, right? So if you're outside, there's a lot more just open air. But inside, that does increase your risk, you know, but most of us have to work inside. So, you know, to your point, that's why they recommend if possible, doing things outside, which is, you know. I think, did that answer your question?
That answered the question. So, so would ventilation play a factor in numbers increasing? Should, should an area be highly ventilated? Or that really, as far as the studies, don't play a part?
Yeah, they really didn't mention the ventilation. I know there are some general standards, but the biggest thing is what we know works, the masking, social distancing and hand washing. But that is a good question and I'm, I'm going to write it down. If I can get some information, I can shoot you an email. So it's a good question now. If I can get some information, I can shoot you an email. So it's a good question now. Thank you, Dr. James. All right, thank you.
Uh, Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, so with the study, I just want to be careful about, you know, presenting one study because we don't know or do you know if the metrics were similar to Portsmouth in terms of positivity rate? And then you also have the issue of population. Do you have, was the population similar to Portsmouth? Because we know that um African Americans and then the elderly are more vulnerable. So when, when we present studies, I think we have to be careful about the findings because we don't know if the um, if the context is the same and that, that can have very different outcomes.
Yeah, and it, to your point, this um COVID, there are not a lot of studies. Um, and you have a lot of good points, but I did think it was important to share because we know as a region, there are schools that have gone back. So I just thought it was important to share. So it is a newer study.
Right, but for those who are watching, I just want to make sure that we understand that this is just one study. And you can't really compare apples to oranges. Every region is different. And I see uh Mr. Nottingham, the statistician, uh shaking his head. So, um, and then also the number of students, you know, it said it was a hybrid model. We don't know how many students are actually in the buildings, you know, so all of those are things that we have to consider.
Thank you. Uh, were there any other questions for Dr. James? At this time, though, she's had a long day. I'm checking both screens. All right. Uh, there are no other questions. Thank you so much again, Dr. James, for sharing with us. Thank you. All right, Agenda Item six point three is the discussion for return to in-person learning. Uh, I'm gonna give everyone an opportunity to, to open a discussion here. But I did just want to uh remind the public and the board that we did as a board vote um to halt in-person instruction uh until we saw ten days under ten percent positivity. But I do know that with the governor's uh requests and with other school boards in the area uh voting and changing to go to in-person learning, that this was, this was something that we need to have a discussion item on. So I'm gonna open the floor now and I'll just do like we did last time, not start with going across my screen to get uh board member input. Or if you feel as though we should uh stay with this plan or consider other options at this time. Uh, the first person on my screen is Vice Chair Atkinson.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I think we should um just take a look at um, just the different options, um possibly hybrid. Um, while also offering an option to parents who would like their um children to remain virtual. Um, and also put, you know, like some stipulations behind that because if you're choosing to keep your child virtual, then, you know, there's gonna be some restrictions on extracurricular activities. Because I feel like if you want your child to be virtual then, and then want them to participate in ex- extracurric- extracurricular activities, then that doesn't make sense. You might as well send your, your kids um to school on a hybrid model, um, because that's still exposure. So um, I would like us to take a look at a, at a, at a possible hybrid model, um, starting probably after spring break.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Chair. I was really hoping to hear from Dr. Bracy before I made any further comments to see, because I know that, you know, we've had discussions with him this week about um, what we wanted to do. So I would really like to hear from him before I weigh in um with any comments or with any concerns or with any, um, with any, anything to that point.
Okay, yeah, only reason I was trying to get uh consensus to see if we wanted to actually, we voted on a, a plan already to see if we had a consensus that we wanted to actually have Dr. Bracy present an alternative option to change what we already have in place. So I was just really trying to get a consensus on if that was a, uh, uh, a way we want to move at this time.
Uh, I'm, I'm flexible.
Mr. Parent?
Well, I mean, si- since the board has already voted uh to um be ten, uh, ten percent positive or below. Um, unless the board changes that tonight. Um, you know, all, you've been, all of us have been getting emails and telephone calls from various people, teachers and, and parents about um the other surrounding school divisions that are now um beginning to uh bring their children back and bring teachers back. So, um, I don't know if Dr. Bracy is as prepared to, after he's listened to and gotten our input uh this week, what his recommendation is going to be uh based on that ten percent, unless the board is gonna change the ten percent. Uh, I'm, I, I'm with Ms. Atkinson. I, I really do prefer um a hybrid, uh especially after the, after all of our teachers have been vac- fully vaccinated. And that would be sometimes after the spring break. And that would be, that, that would bring teachers back um a week after spring break. And then we could begin to um move in that direction. But that's just, that's just my, uh, how I feel. I don't know what Dr. Bracy is, the direction he's going now. Thank you, Mr. Dern.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, I, I kinda agree with what uh Vice Chair Atkinson was saying as far as the hybrid model. And I do think that, you know, eighteen point seven percent positivity rate is still high for us. And I, I believe that um I think we could safely bring the teachers back maybe around March twenty-second, like we had originally planned, all the staff to get ready to bring the kids back after spring break. Uh, I do go, I do agree with the hybrid so they can do in-person for those that want it and virtual for the parents that want to keep them. Um, I, I do believe that regardless of where we are, I have always said, you know, I look at the science and the metrics. And this is what we were taught earlier, but of course, um, it's been around, COVID has been around for we're going to our second year almost. So they do, do know a little more than at the beginning. And the fact that we have had quite a, over fifty percent of our staff that wanted to be vaccinated have been. Uh, I see no reason for us to continue to delay because we do have to go back to school. I remember this conversation in October, November, when it was three percent. And then it was, why are you going back now when the holiday is coming? And, and December is coming. So then we pushed it off. Then, of course, it was the surge after the holiday. So all of the school divisions in this, this uh region, I believe, have voted to start back March fifteenth or earlier. So I do think that uh spring break, um, uh, I know originally during some discussion uh with the superintendent earlier, he had talked about spring break after spring break. But I do think it's important that we start bringing staff back earlier to get ready to bring our kids back after spring break. That's my comment.
Thank you so much. Uh, Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, um, my, I guess, number one concern is the positivity rate in Portsmouth being over twice what it is for the entire state. I'm not sure what the positivity rate is any other school districts that are planning to bring um students and staff back. And the second issue is the ventilation issue. Um, I know that we did receive money to refit um some of the ventilation systems in the buildings. And I thought that was also something that the CDC was recommending, that you have adequate um ventilation as well. So for me, um, you know, I, I really think that we should stay um virtual if possible. I mean, I've also read the emails, um, you know, of teachers. And some of them are very concerned about having to come back, um, you know, into the buildings. Um, I know that most of them will be vaccinated by then, but my other concern is that students who um will come back, what about family members who have not been vaccinated yet? Um, particularly elderly family members and the risk for exposure to them. So those are, you know, some of my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, Ms. Thomas and then Mr. Tillich.
Thank you. Um, I know Chairman Patillo, like you said, we already voted um to look for that ten percent positivity rate for ten days straight. That was our initial decision and we are back here um because of the the request of the governor and looking at some of the, sorry, looking at some of the impacts to our families. So I, I hear the concerns of the teachers as well, um, but there's the flip side of the concern of the parents and the students that um, are home, some doing well virtually, some not doing well. I will say this, um, after looking at the presentation from Dr. James, being that we are, we are in very high, I recommend that we stay the course that we're on right now until we at least um, can look at some additional mitigation efforts. Um, one, including the vaccination. So I think we, Dr. James said, we are looking to have everyone with their second shot that participated by the end of, so I. Can you all hear me?
Hear you now, yes.
Thank you. Sorry, I had a call coming in. I didn't know it was gonna disconnect. But anyway, what I was saying is that I think looking at where we are red, uh, we should stay the course until we have some additional mitigation. Um, things in place, including the fact that the target date for those that participated in the vaccine, we're looking to have those, everyone vaccinated that did participate by end of March. So coming back, um, looking at a hybrid return, maybe spring break, kind of weighing the option, is that even worth the disruption? Since it's so close to the end of the year, but still given an option if available, I think that's our best course, my opinion. And I also have a question or just want to throw this out there. I think the general concern that I'm hearing, not just from the teachers, also from the parents and the families, is the readiness plan. And I know Dr. Bracy and staff have really been on that, but I think just getting that out there a little bit more will help ease some of the concerns and ease some of the question. So let's say we were at ten percent, ten days, starting on Friday, like, like if that was the, and would we be ready? Does everyone know what the plan is? Like, does, it does everyone feel comfortable, the teachers that will go back in school on any of the technology and equipment that's, that they need to use to do a hybrid type setting? I think even if we push it out to April or like Ms., what, what Member Williams said, having the teachers come back in March, I think the biggest question for everyone um is just what is our readiness and what is our plan? So we can talk about a date, but I think we can also maybe be better in terms of communicating what is our plan. If we were to go back on Friday, would everyone know what the plan is? So those are my, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Tillich.
Yes, um, so I want to echo the sentiments of um, Vice Chair Atkinson, um, in regards to a hybrid model. Um, I do think that we need to explore the option of um hybrid learning. Um, as Board Member Williams said, you know, we've been pushing this along. Um, every, you know, every time we turn around, it's, it's a different thing. And I think we need to at least move in the, the direction um of give, of working towards normalcy again. Um, I do believe that um, saying, I do believe uh Board Member Thomas mentioned that we do need a plan, no matter when we go back, whether it's ASAP, whether it's at the spring break or next year. Um, all of our staff need to know what our readiness plan is um before those doors do reopen. Um, I am also in favor of bringing back um all of our staff um to the buildings um before students do come back to school. Um, I, if I'm not mistaken, I do believe that there are some school districts in the area that um, teachers have been working out of their classrooms, um, different days of the weeks, uh while still teaching virtually. Um, so it would definitely be an option of um exploring hybrid options. And also in regards to uh students that play athletic sports, um, I know many of them are um practicing already. And I do believe that if s- students are able to come practice um sport, then they are able to um be in person for learning. Um, I would just like to see a plan in place um before we do open those doors. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, it sounds like we have a consensus to uh revisit. Uh, to have Dr. Bracy revisit our reopening plan and to present us a plan, another option for reopening that would include some type of hybrid model. Um, I, I will say that I, I too have, I'm, I'm have my reservations about uh in-person learning, the, the eighteen percent positivity rate, uh, that, that really bothers me. Uh, I don't truly feel the data that we receive from CDC and other organizations are actually uh accurate and, and not uh contaminated a bit uh based on political issues. Um, I also have an issue that even if we were to bring students and teachers back in person, that the governor still doesn't require us to be in person because if we have more than ten people, that, that bothers me. Um, a lot of our businesses are still not allowed to be open at a certain capacity, but we can have hundreds of students in a school building. So I, I, I just feel like the, the information that we're receiving is a little hypocritical. Um, uh, from the CDC and other organizations. And also, uh, Dr. Dr. Whitaker uh prefaced it when she said that all communities are not the same. And community spread is different depending on the community that's, that's, that's represented in the data. Um, and for schools that are open, uh, no, there, there are schools that are closing every day and class that are being shut down every day. So, but the data won't reveal that. But that's a true statement. So I, I feel like when we move into this next phase, that we need to take into consideration the ventilation issue. Um, also the reported cases, the, the high, um, the PCR rate, uh substitute shortage, uh bus driver shortage. Um, even if something as simple as the cleaning of restrooms thoroughly throughout the day, if we're gonna have people in the building, those things, again, I guess, will go as a part of the plan, uh, as Ms. Thomas mentioned. Uh, but we're, we're gonna ask that Dr. Bracy, um, at this time, Mr. Carroll, will we need a, a, a motion to uh move into this, this new phase or could we just ask Dr. Bracy based on uh the board preference now to, to consider a new option for going back in person?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think you can ask Dr. Bracy to bring you back a recommendation for a future vote, if that's what you're asking me.
Okay. Uh, so I guess at this time.
You would need to, to have a vote to change the earlier vote.
Okay. So at this time, we're, I guess we're asking Dr. Bracy now if he would uh bring us back an option of, of hybrid, hybrid learning. We have a meeting scheduled for March the second. And I will say that I, I know that it's a, a, a testy issue. But I want to ensure the public that every board member on this board, uh, no matter what our, our opinion is, we all have the best for our children in our hearts and in our minds. And, and that's always our number one goal and to keep our children safe uh while learning. And I just want to make sure I put that out there. They can speak for themselves, but I, I know them personally as well. And I know where their hearts lie when it comes to our children, based on all of our opinions. So do we have any other questions for Dr. Bracy as far as, or any recommendations for him before we move on to the next item? Ms. Thomas?
Thanks, Chairman Patillo. I just wanted to ask you to clarify. So the recommendation is just to move from the vote that we made earlier regarding the 10% for 10 days and just explore additional options? Is that what we're asking?
We're, we're asking Dr. Bracy to make a presentation of, of a hybrid option at our next board meeting from March the 2nd. And then we would, at that time, vote if on the option that he presents to us.
Thank you.
Were there any other questions or comments at this time? All right, no more questions or comments, so move to the next agenda item. Agenda item 6.5, the V S B A Recognition of School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. And I'll read, we do have an appreciation certificate for Ms. Kathy Chambers and for Ms. Brenda Stewart. And I'll read one certificate that reads, V S B A School Board Clerk Deputy Clerk Certificate of Appreciation. It's presented to Kathy Chambers in appreciation of your dedication and hard work for public education through continued service to students of the Commonwealth of Virginia. School Board Clerk Deputy Clerk Appreciation Week, February the 15th through the 19th, 2021. And it is signed by Janet Turner Giles, the President, and Gina Patterson, Executive Director. And we're giving a loud cheering applause for our clerk and our deputy clerk, Ms. Chambers and Ms. Stewart. And I trust you all receive a token that was sent on behalf of the board. We were able to send them an edible arrangement to thank them for their, their service and dedication. Oh, there it is, Ms. Ms. Stewart. And I would just want to say to the public that was paid for by personal funds, not public funds.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
You're very welcome. Agenda item 6.6, V S B A School Board Appreciation Month, Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Chair Patillo. And I also want to recognize the school board members as well. We received your certificate from V S B A. And they all read the same, but I will read one so that you all know what's written. It's Virginia School Boards Association Certificate of Recognition, honoring you in appreciation of your dedication and service to excellence in education on behalf of students of the Commonwealth of Virginia. School Board Appreciation Month, February 2021. And it's signed by the President Janet Giles and Executive Director Gina Patterson.
Thank you so much, sir. At this time, we will now have agenda item 7.1, the Superintendent Report, Dr. Bracy.
Okay, thank you. Good evening again, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkins, and members of the board. As you can imagine, this has been a very busy month for our school division, so I'll just get right to the report tonight. First, I want to talk about our Here to Help campaign that continues to be running in full force. Last week, some of you should have received printed postcards that were delivered to the households of every student and staff member, reminding them about the new webpage and our resources. In addition, if you have been following our social media channels, you might have noticed we had some famous support from our campaign, from Cedric the Entertainer, of course, everybody knows him as Ced the Entertainer. And to tell you the truth, I would keep your eyes peeled for tomorrow for another famous-ish celebrity as well. So now, there may have been some clues in that last line for anyone that may want to guess. But in all seriousness, you know, we're, we're seeing some great results. In the past three weeks, we've seen visitation go up by 600%. You know, there have been more than 1,800 page views of the Here to Help webpage just since February 1st. And we're glad that the message is getting out to our families. Speaking of important messages, February, of course, is Black History Month. In addition to the work and instruction in our classrooms, it has been wonderful to see so many of our community members help support our school efforts in sharing information about the importance of Black history. From guest readers, guest speakers, I want to thank you all for being part of our efforts. I welcome you all to look at Twitter to see the ways our schools are honoring this month as well. February also serves as Career and Technical Education Month. I want to commend the board's dedication to our CTE program. As you saw in the estimate of needs, we're looking forward to expanding once again to develop a public safety program, which hopefully can be a direct pipeline for our police and fire departments. So I thank our board for their vision, as well as our CTE staff and students and families for taking part in these programs. We know in education, we're building a workforce of tomorrow in today's schools. But with CTE, we're truly building today's workforce today as well. Finally, we've had a lot of discussion tonight about reopening our schools and making sure that we do that as safely as possible. We know for our staff members, one of the first steps in that direction was the access to the COVID-19 vaccine. So as already has been stated, you know, thank you, Mrs. Duren, for everything that you and your team has done to get that campaign going. And, you know, as was mentioned, we've had the three clinics at the Sportsplex. And we're looking forward to the last one next Wednesday. So, and I, I as well would like to thank Dr. James and the Health Department here in Portman for their partnership and their collaboration. And everyone knows that they've worked tirelessly to make this, this as successful as it has been. And we don't want to, we want to make sure all of our employees that would like the vaccine have access to it. I want to thank you all again for your leadership, for ensuring that we're doing the best possible job for our staff. Thank you, Chairman Patillo. That completes my report.
Thank you so much, sir.
Reverend Tillage, before, before you get into the, the next items, we, we do have one piece that I want to update regarding the vaccine that, that is dealing with our schedule. And I will, I will let Dr. Cromarty, if he will, talk about the changes that, that we're gonna make in reference to that second dose that we'll receive in March. And it will, and we'll get the information out, but I wanted to put it out here first for, so everyone could hear it. Dr. Cromarty.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkins, and members of the board. Just want to bring your attention to some possible things that might help our staff with getting the second dose of vaccination. As you know, we've been given vaccination on Wednesdays that will continue into March, and folks will take them a month from when they took the, the prior vaccination. We've heard reports that the second dosage of the Moderna vaccine poses more significant side effects than the first dosage. People have reported significant chills, nausea, things of that nature. So what we'd like to propose is a modified schedule for the month of March to accommodate folks on Wednesdays to get their second dose of vaccine and on Thursdays for any possible increased side effects that they may have as a result of receiving the vaccine. What we will do for the month of March with the board's approval is be certain that we've got meaningful and engaging student activities to participate in asynchronously on those days to afford our staff the opportunity to get in and get the second dosage and an extra day to deal with any lingering side effects that may result. So it's, it's, it's an ask that we modify our calendar for the month of March. There are five, I believe there are five Wednesdays, but we'd only be giving vaccines on four of those Wednesdays. And that we do asynchronous work on Wednesdays and Thursdays. And I'll entertain any questions you might have about that.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Dr. Cromarty. I think that's a great idea because some of the staff had mentioned, you know, what, what were they to do? If they get it in, if they were back working and if they're sick. So of course I said, I'm sure that the administration would work with them and no one should have to come to work sick. I'm glad you, you shared that with us.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and, and what, is it time for board member comments or?
Yep, we can move to that now. We can, yes, ma'am, we can move to that now.
Okay, I was going to say that, you know, after Dr. Bracy brings his plan back and whenever the, the staff return to the building, I believe that the school board need to also return to in-person meetings. I don't know if the city will be open or closed, but we have had them at some of our schools until they do. And that was also one of the questions I, I did ask the governor. Well, since you're asking the schools to open, reopen, when are you gonna ask the state and local government to reopen? Because it's, it's normally less people there than are in school buildings. But of course, I, I asked them to tag him and he didn't respond. I know he wasn't, I know that he was not going to. But that is my question for the governor and the legislators. But be that as it may, whenever we vote on the new plan, I think the school board needs to return to in-person meetings as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We are on board member comments and concerns. Ms. Heinz?
Thank you, Chairman Patillo. I was wondering if it would be possible to have a special call meeting for next Thursday to review the plans that Dr. Bracy has before us before we vote on them in March.
Uh, we can't move to have a special call meeting, it just takes a.
I just, I personally feel uncomfortable having a plan put in, in front of me and having to make a decision that night. In having a plan, there's power in asking questions, there's time to marinate a thing. And I also, I, I think it's powerful that we are transparent enough with our, with our, with our faculty, with our students and with our community, that these would be the expectations and this is what's gonna be laid out. And I think that needs to be presented and I think there needs to be time for us to have that presentation, for us to have time to review said information before we vote on that information. So I'm, I'm requesting that we have a special called meeting just to discuss the plans that would be brought forth by Dr. Bracing.
Yeah, I mean, I have no objection to, we only need to have, I believe, two or three board members to agree to have a special call meeting. Ms. Williams?
I agree. I concur.
Sister Kathy, I, I believe we would have to announce that tonight to, to have that. I mean, how's that work? Is it 10 days or?
It's like a week before the meeting. I mean, three days, you have three days.
Three days, okay.
But I can do it tomorrow or Monday, doesn't matter.
Okay, so if, if there are no objections from, from board members, we'll ask Ms. Chambers if she can organize and set up a meeting for next Thursday, a special call meeting to discuss the said plan for reopening.
The time.
I believe this is the same time, work 5:30 for everyone. Ms. Heinz?
Yeah, thank you, sir. Also, is there any, with, with going back to what Board Member Williams said about meeting in person, are we looking at having our March meetings in person at this point as well?
We had not had them scheduled for in person as of yet. I believe we need to get further guidance on if that is, I guess, legal at this point to have a meeting of more than 10 people. So I, I will ask Mr. Carroll if he can research that for us and let us know, or if he knows now, he can.
I, I'll give you the details, but we are under the governmental exception. We can have a in-person meeting. And we've done it in the past at one of the schools. You're gonna test my memory to tell you exactly when that was, but it was warmer outside. But we can, we can make it happen legally, sure. We may have to give some notices to the public if the public is going to attend and potentially have some building restrictions, but, but we can work through those issues.
So are we, Ms. Williams?
Yes, I was simply gonna say the General Assembly, the Senate is meeting in person at the Science Museum because it's a huge building. But, but they are meeting in person and it's much more than 10 people. And that is the governor's branch.
We would fall into the same exception that they do as a governmental body.
So is, is the majority will of the board to organize our next meeting in person? Ms. Thomas and then Mr. Tillage.
Regarding meeting in person, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Regarding meeting in person, I know you all might have met in person last year, my school board. But can I get some guidance on what our mitigations are for meeting in person? I know we're gonna wear masks, I know we're gonna social distance, but I would be interested in what other strategies we have in place before we meet. But I am comfortable meeting just as long as I have a chance to review the strategies we have in place for, in terms of meeting in person.
And, and I, I will also want to know the location and the capacity that we're gonna have as far as public in one single space and the size of the space as well. Ms. Williams?
Yeah, you know, we had our, the public hearings on the renaming of the schools at Wilson High School. And the operations staff, Dr. Simmons and Dr. Bracy, they did an exceptional job as far as making sure we were spaced out six feet apart, the sanitizers, the mask, they followed all the CDC guidelines. And even down to the point where we didn't know how many people would be coming, but they had determined how, what the capacity was that could come in. And that, that even arranged that some could come and some would leave, but we, we didn't have that situation. So they are very good at mapping out and laying out the, the guidelines to mitigate any of the circumstances.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure, so we, we are agreeing as a majority that we're gonna have our March 2nd meeting.
March 4th.
March, I'm sorry, March 4th meeting in person. Okay, so Ms. Kathy, I guess we can work on a location for that. We can talk tomorrow to work on a location for that. And you can also, we can also send out whatever the mitigation strategy will be for that meeting on March the 4th.
Okay, and then the February 25th one is virtual?
Yes, I believe we still, we're gonna start with our March meetings.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Ms. Heinz, are you, you finished?
Ingrid's hand is up.
Okay, now I was making sure she was finished. Okay, Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, at the last meeting, I asked for an update on the disparity study. And I was checking to see when will we get that update. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker spoke with Mr. Falk, actually today about that, because we were trying to get it at the, the next meeting. He's been in contact with the consultant that is putting the, that has put together the study. So now he and Mr. Thomas are in review of that. So it'll probably take them another couple of weeks for review. So I've asked Kathy to put it on the agenda for the, the March 18th meeting for discussion.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes, um, my, my question is in regards to the in-person meeting in March. Will that time still be 5:30 or will it be pushed back to allow people travel time?
Normally, I believe our in-person meetings normally start at, is it 6:30, 5:30? Oh, it's a work session, I'm sorry, 5:30.
Gotcha.
Were there any other board member comments at this time? With there no other comments, we will now call this meeting adjourned. Thank you and have a great evening. With there no other comments, we will now call this meeting adjourned. Thank you and have a great evening.